Okay, folks, we are live, on air. Greg?
Electronic meeting by teleconference as chairman of the Hampton School Board has determined that due to the state of emergency declared by the governor as a result of COVID-19 pandemic, in accordance with the governor's emergency order number 12 pursuant to executive order 2020-04, that the properly, that you properly ensure that the safety of the public and that several, and that of several of the board members who are within the CDC guidelines needing to take special precautions, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note, there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the governor's emergency order. However, in accordance with emergency order, I am confirming we are, we are utilizing a teleconference service for this electronic meeting. All members of the board have the ability to communicate contemporously during this meeting through this platform, and the public may join this electronic meeting by calling 1-857-444-0744 and use the code 156034.
And I'm just going to repeat that again. 1-857-444-0744, and the code is 156034.
Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Pledge of allegiance, folks?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Board member updates? Budget, Ginny?
Yes, we are meeting with the budget committee on October 20th. That's a change from September. Because of the COVID situation, because of everything that's come up, there is a need to have another month to get the work together that's going to be presented to the budget committee.
Okay. Anything else, Ginny?
No.
Andrea, wellness?
I don't have anything.
School Boards Association, I don't have anything. Rec Department, Andrea?
The rec department basically is just working really hard and has all summer to provide activities to get kids outside and, you know, doing some camp activities and things like that. And right now, their main focus is on after-school programs for, you know, as many students as they can possibly help with that. And you can go to their website and see that, but there's, they've got rolling enrollments, and so I know kids can still enroll in those, especially for, you know, parents that are working and things like that.
Andrea, you may want to just turn your, leave it where it is, just kind of.
Okay.
Okay. Policies, Pepper, Andrea?
No.
Nothing. Professional development, no, Pepper?
No, it's all set for this year, so we'll dig in later.
We ought to take that off then, or put something there, so I don't say it every week. PTA, Ginny?
No, I don't have anything.
Anything? And strategic plan, Pepper, no? And curriculum, Andrea?
Just that I think all staff have been so busy just getting prepared and doing all the training they need to do to get things going, but I know that within the next few weeks, once everybody gets situated and they get a routine going, that I believe they're all going to be doing testing of some type to make sure they understand where students are at, what needs to maybe need remediation, and, you know, just to, just to get a baseline and work from there. And I know curriculum maps is always an ongoing thing with them as well.
Any other board members have any other announcements? Okay. Principals' reports? Mr. Lannan? How are you?
How are you?
Good, thanks.
Just a couple of things. Today is another first day of school. This is the third day in a row of first days of school. We had first day of school for Cohort A, then we had the first day of school for both cohorts to get together on Wednesday to have that remote day, and today was the first day of school for Cohort B. So you picked a great time to have a meeting. I'm a little tired today on the third first full day of school. No, but I'm here to report that it's all going well. It's going as best as we could expect. The kids are doing absolutely great. They're getting used to the new norm, the new norm of recess and lunch and walking in the hallways and wearing their masks all the time. And I'm here to report that these kids are troopers. They're doing awesome at that, wearing those masks and being, taking part in the new norms in school. So that's just really the nuts and bolts of what's going on the first couple of days of school. We did some nice orientation, meet and greets. We spread it out over three days, which was great, gave parents an opportunity. Our dismissal is the same way. We have opportunities for parents to have an opportunity at the end of the day, because we were dismissing at 14 separate locations to really reduce the amount of traffic and flow. So it's a total change. It's a total makeover at center school. It's not your center school anymore, Pepper. It's not. So it's off to a good start, and that's what we need to tell you today. It's off to a good start. Any questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
No, go ahead, Frank.
Okay, how have the, and I'm going to ask everyone this, but how's the screening going? How's it working?
So the parents are participating?
Both students in.
Yep. So the teachers are doing great. They've been doing it since August 26th. They're coming in, and they come in the front door only, and they have that nice temperature that the facility's bought, the machine that works. It tells you if you are normal, which so far, knock on wood, everybody's been normal. And they all fill out their screening. It took them a day or two to get into the habit, but now they're doing that online. Like I told, like I said to start off, it's day one today, so there were some students who had trouble logging on, and I have to give credit to Greg and Cheryl and the team for continually reaching out, and LJ Dutton especially, for reaching out and meeting with those parents right away. So if they're unable to do it because of a technical issue, they'll do it over the phone with us. We have a paper copy, and we take and we log that as well. So we have a backup plan with paper, just in case it's not working. So I have to say, today, there was only 15 people that didn't do it out of all of the students that reported to school, and most of them were glitches in technology. That is simple fixes already, but thank you, Frank.
Thank you.
Yep.
Key.
And the reports do come in by 8:15, so we have an opportunity to stop them from coming in.
That's great. Kindergarten, how many kids do you have in a class?
In a class?
You got 10.58 here. So that means you're doing, I'll give you 11.
Well, I have it all here.
Do you? Oh, great.
In kindergarten, there is a total of 72 kids. In Cohort A, they're averaging eight to nine. In Cohort B, they're averaging eight students, about eight students a class. So I have 16 in every class going down, and I have eight students that are full remote.
You have eight students that are full?
Full remote. I have four classes on-site, and I have one class off-site, one off, full remote teacher.
You only have one remote?
We have two full remotes, but they're doing the off-kindergarten days as well. So each off-kindergarten day, Ms. Colby and Mrs. Guerriano are both considered hybrid and remote teachers. And so when the kids aren't in school, they're still getting a mimic of their day, which is awesome. I really appreciate your support in that.
Yep.
So the classes are, my entire school is classes of eight to 10 in each cohort. I maximize, we have a maximum level at my school, at least of 10 per cohort, with a square foot size. That really is the sweet spot that we want to stay in.
Okay. Great. And you have 23 in your preschool? Twenty?
Twenty-four as of today, yep.
Twenty-four. Are you taking any more community students?
No.
You're not? Okay.
Not as of today. We haven't worked on a process yet, but we're thinking about as we get comfortable, Ginny. We do a fall, in the springtime to do a chance to enroll if there's an opportunity, but we're holding off in the fall a little bit to see how this thing goes, but if it looks great, then we can do something. But we have a lot of people that aren't here that are in the queue, so to speak, that are now starting the process to be identified as a special education student that have got to fill some more slots up real fast.
Yeah. Yeah. And so if you have, you have 24 students and you have three classes? Or do you have six now?
I have just traditional four classes still.
Okay, good.
Two in the morning and two in the p.m.
Good. So that's a good number to have.
Absolutely.
All right.
And you're meeting the space requirement, right?
Absolutely, absolutely. Yeah, those numbers are all under 10 per session as well, which is great.
How's the drop-off going and pickup and everything? Is that going all right?
It's going excellent, because we're having it in a different location. So it's center school because we don't have, because it's so close to Winnicott Road, we don't have the full driveway or the capability, because the buses come in that way.
Right.
So the parents park at either here, which they're very grateful. We're very grateful that they allow us to park in here for 10 minutes, or they park on toll and they get out of the car, and they walk with their mask on to the location. I have locations in the east parking lot, the west parking lot, and the two back corners of the south sides of the building. So grade one is in the back of the building, grade two is on the west side, grade K is on the east side, and preschool is in the back corner. So they actually go to 14 or 16 in the morning locations because of preschool, and so that way we spread out in the, we have a big campus, so we take advantage of that big campus. So there isn't any traffic. I have to say, we're getting in, we've talked to Lois about this, we're still getting in within our normal timeframe. The buses are running late. I have to give, it's not the bus company's fault, it's the first couple of days, so we are having some busing issues, but that's, that's the norm in the first few days of school. We're okay. The parents listening tonight, we, you know, we do apologize for the delays and some of the busing, but we want to get it right, so we want to go slow, so that we don't lose anybody. So the buses may be delayed a little bit, but they will get into the groove in a little bit, but we're not needing the extra time.
Good.
Thank you, guys.
Any other questions for Mr. Lannan? Thank you, Tim.
You're welcome.
Hello, Nathan?
Hey, how are you?
Good, thank you. How are you?
Wanted to let some people in and lock myself out, so that was what that commotion was over there. No, same as Tim, great, two opening days, you know, three opening days of school so far. This thing's to fine-tune and iron out as we keep going, and I like Mariah's thing of trial, error, and correction, so we're working out the bugs with them, but like Tim said, our drop-off in the morning, I mean, we're normally 8:20 to 8:35, by 8:36, we have all the kids in the building, so it's, we're a minute off our normal time, which is great. And then dismissal's a little slower, but we're going to start out slow and do it correctly, and then continue to get faster and faster and more efficient each week, but, you know, that's been great. I will say, the staff really appreciated the extra time we gave them, one of the delayed opening of school, you know, they found it very beneficial in terms of collaborating and refining their curriculum, their units of instruction, you know, doing all the required trainings that are necessary before school starts, so it was really a great time for staff, and so I just wanted to thank, you know, the board for giving them that time that they needed to really feel comfortable and prepared, because we know that if the teachers feel safe and comfortable, they're going to help the kids feel safe and comfortable, and it's that trickle-down effect. The only other announcement we have is that for parents listening, and the flyers are coming up tomorrow afternoon, but we'll have our first picture day for Cohort B, which is our Thursday, Friday kids. That'll be on Thursday, September 17th. And our Cohort A students, which are Monday, Tuesday kids, will be on Monday, September 21st. So we'll include the students that are in the building. We've also slotted times for our full-remote students to come in through a side entrance first and get their pictures taken as well for school records and parents that want to purchase them. So even though kids aren't all in the building, they all have the same opportunities as the kids that are in the building.
Any other questions for Mrs. Lannan?
Well, I have the same question I asked to Lannan. How's the screening going and how the kids and the staff taking?
Yeah, screening's great, you know, again, the time we used in the beginning of the year was a kind of a dry run for staff to get out all the bugs with the machines and the screenings, and, you know, a lot of our staff, like Paris, never really logged into power school, so getting that information and access for them was essential. They're at school, you know, it's a dozen if that, and a lot of it's technology glitches, or we're getting some kids who are full-remote that are coming up that they haven't screened, which, times they're not coming to the building, it's okay. But we've been having the nurses, so far, touch base with each kid, and we have the teachers stop the kids before they even enter the classroom, because we give them the list, so they send them down to the nurse's office first thing in the morning, they ask them the questions, do a quick temperature check, and they're tracking all that. And right now, it's just, we're working on it with each kid, but if it becomes habitual, then we'll, you know, continue contacting parents and move up the level as we need to, if I have to make a phone call for frequent flyers, but since we've only been there for two days, we don't have any of that yet.
And the teachers have taken well to the special screening?
Yeah, the teachers haven't had a problem, you know, they all come in through the front door and do their temperature check, and then they might go out a side door and unload their car, but, you know, in the morning, we have a very few staff, and usually the ones that come on our list are people that work later in the day, might be food service who comes in at 9:30, or a custodian that comes in at 2:00, so they're not doing it by 8:00 in the morning, and that kind of makes sense, because they're coming in later as long as it's done before they enter the building, so.
And the spacing situation in the classroom?
Yeah, we've been great, you know, our biggest class has 11 kids. I was trying to think, we tried to limit that at 11. We know we could put a couple more desks in a room socially distanced, but there's no real need to do that at this time. So our cohorts are, you know, around 20, 21 in a class, but when they're split up over two days, we can maintain that 11 students and 11 student desks in a room.
Well, I would be remiss if I didn't mention to you and Mr. Lannan that my neighbor has had excellent reviews from his kids regarding both schools.
I do.
Yeah, they're happy.
We're always looking, you know, for parent feedback, whether it's positive or if there's things we can do to refine procedures, so, you know, if parents have concerns or things that they might think, it's a little hard to tell right now, two days in, but as the year progresses.
All the kids in our neighborhood rave.
I think they're excited to be in school. I mean, they're getting used to being in a recess zone and sitting in a desk and wearing a mask, but they're with their friends, and they're back in school, and they're face-to-face, and I think for a lot of kids, they really, really needed this, and they're doing it.
But even the Cohort A kids were comparing with Cohort B kids, and even the B kids on Tuesday were just saying, oh, it was great, we knew what we were doing, it was fine.
The teachers really tried to make it as seamless as possible, so when kids, because we knew half of our school is starting, you know, a chunk of them are full-remote anyways, but half of them are starting, their first day of school is online, so we had to make sure it was beneficial for them.
And they were, like I said, they were jabbering back and forth, and it was wonderful both ways, so.
Goodness, glad to hear it.
Ginny?
What are your united arts doing?
Teaching full classes, so they, the way we look at it at Marston is, classroom teachers are classroom teachers. Everyone else is a blended teacher, which means they do in-school and hybrid. So integrated arts classes go into the same classroom pretty much for the week, so they might go to Jess Hinchcliffe's class Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, because if you just have art on Monday, Thursday, Friday kids never get art. So it also makes it so IA's only go into four classes a week as opposed to 19, to limit their exposure and the contamination of cohorts. So they teach live in the class, they also post asynchronous integrated arts lessons for kids that are home on their hybrid days, and they teach live integrated arts to full-remote kids. So even though you're not in the building, you still get a 50-minute art class with Jenny Houston or a 50-minute music class with Mr. Carlson, so, you know, we've adjusted some things. We don't have morning recess anymore, so they do a recess duty in the middle day as opposed to a morning day. We don't have CPT coverage at the end of the day, so I use them in the morning on bus coverage and other things, but they're teaching a full schedule just like they normally would, it's just a slightly bit different now that it's weekly rather than daily.
Okay.
And that also gives them an escape?
Yeah.
You know, from the corporate situation?
Yeah, because they're not going into as many rooms throughout the day, and the nice thing is, we're trying to give the kids that are home for full-remote as much of a normal learning experience, so that's why they're still getting their picture day. When we do school-like morning meetings virtually, they'll be logged in and attending those from home, and they get the synchronous live integrated arts classes.
Great.
Yeah.
Things I never thought I'd hear in education, asynchronous integrated arts class on a hybrid day.
There's a lot of stuff going on in education, I don't know what in the wrong I would be doing, but, you know, it's trying to make the best for the staff and the kids, and, you know, I think it's working out so far. It's a small sampling of days, but if we can keep going like this, I think we're going to be in a good place.
Do you think at some time you could put like a music lesson from Mr. Carlson or an art lesson from Mrs. Houston, just so the pub, on channel 13, not 22? Yeah, because I think a lot of people question, what is really an art teacher doing? What's a music teacher doing? Yeah.
Especially if they're doing a synchronous lesson to a live group, there's no kids in there, we have to worry about privacy and stuff, you know, it's Mr. Carlson in the music room.
Yeah.
On a computer going, but he's still doing the same lesson that he would do in the classroom.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're sure we could coordinate something like that.
Yeah, I mean, I think that would be cool for the public to see.
Yeah, I mean, it's a little different, you know, when you're in art class, not everyone's sharing all the paintbrushes and stuff, but Mrs. Houston's making it work with individual vags and still trying to do the same great stuff she always does, just slightly different.
Could she come down to preschool? We're having a problem with that.
Anything else for Nathan? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. O'Connor?
Good evening. I'm going to reiterate what Mr. Lannan and Nathan said, that it was a really great start. And again, we always get anxious on the first day of school. Well, we've had three first days of school in a row, so I cannot thank my staff. There's a lot of hard work that went into this to make these days possible, and I want to recognize Mr. Lassard and his staff, because they've kept us safe, they've kept us, they've reassured us, they're doing a great, they're doing a great job as far as, as far as making sure that we have all the supplies, all the materials and everything necessary, so. We started our first day with a primary election at our site, so, again, the traffic flow was very good, parents have been great. Again, a few bus issues, because remember, during the summer, we put a survey out for parents to tell us about that, and we're finding that, again, it was a survey, so not everybody responded, so we're working on refining those stops, but so far, so good. And we missed rain at dismissal, although this afternoon, I went outside and got caught in it, so I apologize. I did have a shirt and tie on today, but I had to get changed.
We did miss the rain at our school.
Again, you know, it is the new normal, we're getting used to the kids. Again, middle school kids are doing a really good job. We use, we use the analogy of please keep one cow in between you, and so you'll be walking down the hall at Hampton Academy, and all of a sudden you hear moo. And that wasn't very good, but the kids are mooing at each other to let them know you're getting too close to me, so. Our procedures are, again, and we're just working through them, we're taking one day at a time, but, like Mr. Lannan and like Nathan, I'd like to report that it's been a great startup school year so far. Screening.
How's it going for staff?
I have the expert right here. On our first day, Tuesday, we had two students not complete the screening, which I thought was wonderful. Today, it was a little, everybody had a forget-me day today. We did 30, 38?
34.
34 students. You know, they've got, the parents have to get it done by 7 o'clock, so we get the print out before they get on buses or they leave, so that's a really, you know, it's 8 o'clock in the morning is a big difference than 7:00. And some of these kids are actually, they're getting dressed themselves, and their parents are already off to work. So we send reminders out, and we'll continue to send reminders, but I watched Karen this morning, and she did those 34 students, and she did them accurately and professionally in less than an hour, I think you'd agree, but I'll save any questions for her.
Okay, and how about the teachers? How are they grading to the facial screening? And how's that going?
Actually, just like, you know, we've had, we had those six days, and again, I'm going to have to reiterate, that extra three, three days that we had together, that really solidified us. We, you know, we, there was a lot to do to make these cohorts. I know that our school, like the other schools, we honored just every single parent request to switch cohorts or to, if they were going remote. In fact, we are still getting requests today of families that either want to come back from remote or go out. And again, I'm, you know, I want kids in the building, and that's what we wanted in August, and we got it. And we're just going to take one day at a time, be very safe, and become a community, which is going to take us a little bit long, a little bit longer, but yesterday's remote day was great, because it's a social, emotional focus, it's not necessarily an academic focus, and it was usually when you do, in a classroom, how much time do you have for an ice break, or how much time do you have to really get to know the kids and have kids tell stories? Well, they had, they had quite a bit of time yesterday, and I bopped into three or four classes, and Mrs. Hughes, I think, was in twice that many, and we just saw great things happening. The staff's nervous, you know, this is, this is uncharted waters, and because of my nautical background, I'll use the analogy, we're building this ship as we're sailing it, but have to say that we're, you know, we've got a, we've got, right now, we've got a good tailwind and following seas, so we're good.
How long's it take to screen all the staff?
They come, again, they come in the front door, the reader is right by the, right by the door, you can, you know.
Yeah, I know, I've done it.
And quite honestly?
They come at different times, so it really is.
Yeah, it's staggering, so, so people arrive from 6:45 until 7:15 in the morning, so there's pretty, there's not, there's not crush. And then, event Karen's office, the way we, the building is set up now, Karen's office is right next to the machine, so if anybody has any questions, Karen has been wonderful. Not just, not just the six days that we've been in school, but, but basically the entire summer, she's been, she's been a resource to us, and we're grateful for that.
And how many machines do each of you have? One?
That's right.
And would it have been more advantageous to have two in each building?
I think it works, Frank. I think we want to funnel everybody through one door, and that way they've got to do it, you know, if I start saying there's one here, one there.
No, no, I meant two in the front.
And I think they're fairly expensive, they're pretty expensive machines, but they, they're very good, they're very accurate. In fact, if I, if you were to go up to the machine and take your mask off like that, it would say no entry. In fact, if I if you were to go up to the machine and take your mask off like that, it would say no entry.
Oh, really?
Yeah. And I want to thank I want to thank the community that they were they've been great. We the kids, the kids, um, the kids are getting used to the masks. Um, the parents are have been great at at drop off and pickup. Um, social distancing is a challenge because we're social beings. And again, you know, we used to have, I tell the kids, we have a personal space of about three feet where we're comfortable like that. But now we've asked them to take that, crank it up two or three times so that this is more comfortable and this is a lot safer.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. O'Connor?
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, special ed, anything?
Oh, I don't know. I suppose just I gave you guys some numbers. Just like everybody else, this was a very smooth opening considering what you had to go through. And those three days were very important for scheduling. It's been very challenging. We do have some students coming in for, um, some extra services, so that that is going very well. Um, both schedules are challenging to put together, but you know what? Everybody's working really hard. And if you have any questions about any of these numbers, I'd be happy to a- answer them. It's going great. We're servicing our kids. Things are going well.
So how many students are coming in four days each week in each school?
Um, we currently have, well, the entire preschool, so that's twenty-two.
Right.
Twenty-two kids.
That's great.
And then we have another sixteen coming in. Um, the ELP program, that's another seven kids. So the majority of the kids of the preschool and the ELP at Hampton Academy with a few scattered others. And they're all through the grades. Yeah.
And that's working out okay?
Yes, yeah. I mean, these are children that need extensive academic interventions, more than they would get on the two days. So it's going very well.
What are your out-of-district students doing?
Out-of-district students? So each out-of-district school is doing their own schedule. Most of them are doing a morning or an afternoon. We do have one school that is going full day. But of our eight out-of-district students, they're all in a program and they're all doing some face-to-face.
And what about any remote?
Yes, we have, um, thirty-six special education students currently doing remote.
And how's that working out for you when you're when you're saying that they need at least four days a week?
So that's the thing about special ed, right? There's this end and then there's that end. So, um, we it's it's working well because when we place our special education students, we put them in the best environment for their learning environment. So for those particular students, it's going very well. But it's all individual. That's what we have to remember.
And it's day three.
And it's day, yeah.
It's already day three.
Right.
Any other questions for those?
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Lynn Paris, technology?
Well, we talked about, uh, first days of firsts. I end up missing the first day of school, so I can't commend my team enough to be there to step up while I was injured and I tore my meniscus. So I was unable to walk until yesterday. It was my first day in and today, second day. Um, but, um, a big change from what I told you a a month ago when we met here. And, uh, we were told we'd have Chromebooks in the beginning of August and they didn't show up. We were told they would ship out on the twenty-second, twenty-fifth, they would be in our school. On twenty-fifth, I called and it was, let me look into it. Let me see when they're coming. And as I was bringing my daughter to college and I figured twenty-sixth to twenty-eighth, I got a call as I'm walking off the campus saying, Greg, I got bad news. And I said, oh, don't even tell me. Because I what I was asking at the twenty-second is if you can't get them to me, just I won't be mad. Just tell me so I have more time. And it was, we can't get them to you. They're not going to be able to be here until November, which then put me and my team into emergency mode. So thank God we had, um, a a young young man from Hampton Academy, um, Caleb. Caleb, uh, who it came in unbelievable, this kid. He was repairing by the time he left. He could change out a a webcam in like two minutes, keyboards. A woman said, I don't have my keyboard. She said, I'll be right back. Give me five, not even five minutes. It was like two minutes and he had it back to the the parent. Um, thank God for him as well as my team just stepping up because we were able to take three hundred and fifty Chromebooks that were slated to go off cycle because they're end of lease or some are even a year past end of lease. And a lot of them in just really bad shape that need to be repaired and get them all repaired, get them back into cycle. And we met the deadline, except for one grade, by opening day. And I apologized to Tim, but what could go wrong would continue to go wrong. And we were told that we'd have power supplies. And I told Tim on the day that you're supposed to pass out your your touchscreen, uh, uh, Chromebooks to your kindergarten, the power supplies will be here. We'll we'll get them out to you that that morning. Well, sure enough, they show up and they're the wrong power supplies, not what I ordered. So I got them overnight over the weekend and Tuesday morning I was able to get Tim. Uh, I wasn't there, but the guys called said they just showed up by midday and they rushed them right over to Tim. So by Tuesday, he was able to pass out. And I'm proud to say that thanks to your support and the effort of my team, we are today one-to-one with every student in our district, grade kindergarten to grade eight, having their own personally assigned Chromebook. Um, and we have some extra still for repairs, not a whole lot, not what we're used to. But, um, I've also made some arrangements, not being happy with Acer and having told me one thing, but now not meeting that deadline because we want to go with Dell. We've had a lot of success with the Dell product in the districts being the most, uh, stable and and, uh, well-built. That I said, I'm going to just go back to to Dell. I'll I'll wait if I have to. And Dell said, well, we think we can get you some the end of September, early October. I'm like, wow, that's even better than what Acer was telling me November now, so let's switch. So we're in the process of switching over the lease to Dell and getting them in a little bit earlier. So it may just be a few weeks of those of you parents out there watching with devices that are not in the best of shape, that they're not the newest devices, who'll be getting them. So grades three, four, and five will be swapped out eventually to brand-new Dell Chromebooks. And, uh, grade one will be swapped out to a touchscreen Dell Chromebook. So and then we'll have all those that will come off of circulation. We can then sell some of those and get some of that money back to help pay for repairs and the cost of repairs we put into these. Um, and we can talk about how we can do that as a as a school board. Um, do we want to sell some to the community or just sell them back to companies that have been approaching me because they all want them because they can get good money for them? I'd rather give them to the the people of town because they paid for it as opposed to letting some company make a better profit. So, um, we could talk about maybe selling those or whatever to at some other time. But let's first make sure we we get the ones in that we're expecting and see how all that rolls. But I'll I'll let you know next month where we are with that. But other than that, I mean, my guys have been great stepping up. We got those kiosks. I know you're talking about temperature. We got those in. Uh, they're they were pretty pretty, uh, complicated devices. We're using the bare minimum of them to begin with. But we can talk at some other point if we want to develop the facial recognition, everything that's built into it. You could even tie them into the doors and not open the door if it doesn't recognize the person. They're pretty pretty impressive devices that will last even past COVID. So there are still applications for it. We can use it at a later point. Other than that, um, all the software is purchased. It's out there and deployed. And, um, we're starting to look at rolling out. I just had today, um, I knew that it would come up, how do we use Minecraft on the Chromebook? That's something new. So I I during the summer, I also switched us from one version of Microsoft licensing to a new version, which also gave us Minecraft in in on a Chromebook, which is brand-new. So I just, uh, tonight, while I was waiting for this meeting, pushed that out, uh, as a trial. And I'm having, um, Ms. McNichol look at that tonight so we can start to look at how do we deploy that out to kids who want to use Minecraft in education on their Chromebook.
How about Roblox? Is that educational or not?
Roblox is something totally different and, um, not and that's not educational. There's there's cops and robbers and there's shooting and things that wouldn't be things that we'd want to have in in the classroom. You know, leave that up to parents to decide how they want to use it at home, but, um, not something.
I thought it was just building blocks.
No, it's kind of a combination of Minecraft where you build stuff, but then cops and robbers and shooting.
Oh, really?
To capture those kids, yeah, so.
Okay, then. Yes, I know someone who's not going to get that.
Greg, do the kids, are the kids encouraged to take their Chromebooks home?
Um, yeah, I I don't want to speak to the principals. I I have always hope have been welcome to that happening. We've purchased GoGuardian. This year, we're GoGuardian Suite, which is all of their products. I didn't get to mention that, but this year we also have GoGuardian Teacher. So any teacher can see their their classroom. You can tie it into your Google Classroom, pull your Google Classroom in. And during that time that you're scheduled to have your Google Classroom, you can see every student's computer screen in front of you, no matter where they are and where you are. So we could actually have students who are, well, not that we want them to leave the Northeast, right? But we could have them anywhere in this world and the teacher could still be seeing them as if they were in the class by seeing what's on their screen. They could limit to the certain tab or certain website that they want them to go to. And they can send the messages or they can shut down a screen or whatever they need to. It gives them a whole lot more control at a distance.
They'll be taking them back and forth because they have to take them home each week for the hybrid model. So yes, they go back and forth.
Right. And it gives them that control to feel comfortable. And we also filter, remember? So there is filtering that happens, uh, at at the mobile level. So even though they go home with the device, for those parents that are worried, we are still filtering them. And as part of the GoGuardian Suite, we now have GoGuardian Beacon, so I'm getting flagged if there are things that are inappropriate or, you know, self-harm, so. Any other questions for me? Hey, well, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, that's all your hard work, but yeah.
Keith, do you have anything for us?
Um, Kelly, if you have questions for me.
I have a question. I'd like to know how the cleaning went on the off day, Wednesday.
Um, everything was clean. Uh, I think things went well. It's still learning curve. Saturday will be our next cleaning day. Um, so far, we've been able to do it with in-house staff. We do have one sub that we've hired because as Alvin had a has a child and he's out with his wife right now. Um, so we do have.
You're getting more news than you probably wanted, but congratulations to him.
Yay.
Um, yeah, so cleaning went well. It went smooth and we anticipate will on Saturday. Um, and we're just going to continue. I mean, I think Mariah is probably going to talk to you about how expensive all the cleaning and stuff is, but that's another, that's another part. Um, but my staff is, uh, uh, the building staff has been very good and cooperative in making sure that they let us know if they want their desk cleaned or not cleaned because of the paper on their desk. The students' desks have been cleaned properly so that we can apply the pesticides. They wash for. I'm saying pesticides because now I got the the public all nervous now.
You do. Disinfectant.
Disinfectant is a regish EPA product. It technically is a pesticide because it's killing a virus. Okay, so we all have it in our house, probably in the form of Lysol. So rest assured, we're using hospital-quality products. I apologize for using that word. Um, but yes, we're out there killing the vid.
How's the lunching situation working at the academy?
I think it's in its infant stages. Um, I can't speak for Mary. I can't speak for Dave, but it seems to be working.
I'm referring to the cleaning.
They've been out on the lawn.
Oh, okay.
So there really isn't a cleaning other than napkins cleaning their faces and putting things in the trash.
Okay, so nothing to do with the.
No, we haven't. We haven't had them inside yet. I mean, Dave is very, um, conscientious of, um, the age group. And there you tend to be, although your preschoolers are very active.
They tend to be.
Um, but I think when you're larger and older and you need a little bit more moving around, um, I think it's worked out well because they don't have recess, blah, blah, blah. So yes, it's worked well.
Great, thank you.
What's the difference between Monday nights and Tuesday nights cleaning and Wednesday?
Well, Monday night and Monday night would be your regular cleaning.
Okay.
Okay, we don't have much movement in the building. They come in, they get the snack, they go to their room. They go out for their their chin breaks. Um, they're going out for PE. Um, so the the wipe down the railings on a regular basis. Um, wipe down the different appliances in the bathrooms that have been used. That's like every two hours or so during the day. Um, after lunch is served, we go around and collect trash right away, so we don't have any four-legged or six-legged friends. Um, so that's and then we have regular cleaning at night. I would like to say that we have always been cleaning our buildings fairly well. Um, in that we've been dealing with flu ever since I have been in facilities. So we've always treated it like that we're we want to keep everybody healthy. Um, even in some of the buildings, I get lists of a classroom. And then they have the students that are absent. So if we were in Mrs. Shepherd's room and it was February and she had like seven kids absent that day, that classroom would get extra attention to make sure that all that we were treating it and cleaning it extra clean because something's going around in there. And we're very lucky to have that opportunity. It's not really a public information, but it's provided us within the building so we can keep eyes on that. So I want people to know that we've always been cleaning for health. Okay, so Tuesday night, we do the same thing as Monday night, except we wash each desk. And so each student desk. And the reason we do that is everybody keeps asking about, you probably wish you never asked these questions. We're too deep. And I apologize. If you don't want me to continue, let me know. Um, but you know, people talk about if it's going to be tacky or residue. Okay, so you cannot kill germs underneath grease. Okay, you know how kids rest their hands? They got their computers here and this. So we've got to clean that oils, natural oils off the desk and then apply the disinfectant. Um, because that's how you get the residue. So we wash those on Tuesday night. Wednesday morning, during the day on Wednesday, um, we get ready to apply the QT three by Hilliard, a hospital-grade, um, quality disinfectant. And we spray that on all the flat surfaces and all the touch surfaces. The feedback we've gotten there has been a few water spots where the droplets were a little bit larger. Um, because we're not using the ideal equipment that we originally wanted because that's on backward. I don't want to piggyback Greg with his stories, but it's the same for all of us. But we have got good supplemental products and we have another product should be here at the end of the month. Keep in mind, we're competing with three billion people for these products. So that's what happens on Wednesday. Um, as you know, the rooms all have eye wave equipment. That the unit ventilators have eye waves. Classrooms that do not have unit ventilators, like some of the older rooms at Center School, they have ultraviolet light circulating machines that are appropriately sized to circulate the air. At Hampton Academy, all of the HVAC has eye wave equipment in each unit. So we're trying to kill as many airborne things as possible, ninety-nine point nine-seven percent. Um, and we're going to see how that works. I don't, none of them have failed yet. Um, but we've put a we've deployed a lot of equipment, so there probably will be a couple of failures just because of, you know, things happen. But, um, I think things are good. I think things are good, but it's only been a week. Um, but we're prepared for the long haul. And I will say that I walk through the buildings. Everybody seems so happy. I mean, people were happy to be back in school. Nervous, first day of school, of course. Um, both our first days, everybody was smiling. Kids were happy. People were happy to be back. And I thought it was a great feeling and thank you for your support.
Are you using the pull paper towels or are you using electronic?
We have self-feeding paper towels. They are not electronic.
Okay, good.
Okay, it's a whole battery issue and long-term pollution.
And waste.
It can be.
Yes.
My problem with those are is that you're in the bathroom, you're doing it and it doesn't go, so you leave like this. You walk away and you go. Eh.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, so.
And that was so interesting. You want to hear it again.
Right.
So I heard, um, you know, hundreds of wonderful things about the voting scenario in the gym. And it was set up great and it was, everything was wonderful. I will mention two probably really minor things. Somebody said it was, a few people said that it was a little stuffy.
Oh, yeah.
But that's just because of the way it was set up and the number of people going in or is that is that kind of be something?
Well, first of all, it was a humid day.
Right.
Um. Um, huh. There is no dehumidification in the gymnasium. That was a valued engineering thing that was taken out with the prior administration.
Yeah.
Okay?
Yeah. Okay, that's great.
Why was it taken out?
Yeah, save money.
Cost.
Kind of a cost issue.
That would be a decision you'd have to ask Mrs. Mercy.
We'd, we'd have to have voted on that or been told about that.
Right, we weren't told anything about that.
It was a, it was probably one of the cost-saving measures.
But we would have been told what the cost-saving measures were.
It was probably during the engineering phase.
Not necessarily, you know.
That's true. We wouldn't have been notified.
Wouldn't have known at that point. It was early on.
It might be something that we want to consider as we move on.
Okay, something to think about.
Oh, absolutely.
Do, like, black lights, like, something like that in the gym, would that help with, um, keeping that space sanitized or clean or?
Oh, well, first of all, black lights, I think of posters back when I was a kid.
Okay, I know. Me too, but I'm not, I guess I'm not talking, ultraviolet.
Ultraviolet lights, yes. Um, UVC lamps. We have the, um, eye wave instruments in the ventilation system.
And that's...
So all the air that's returned, the air coming in from the outside...
Okay.
Is treated before it's dispersed into the space.
Okay, all right. So it's already being done and we don't have to worry about that?
That's, yes, yes.
So the circulation in the gym is okay then?
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay, okay.
Correct.
Okay.
It is, it does get hot in there and, um, we're kind of disappointed we didn't have the dehumidification.
Well, now we, now we know what we need to work on. You're right, you're right. But other than that, I heard nothing but glowing, glowing things from people around town, that it was, the setup was great, it was easy, it was just, you know.
And they're limiting the number of people at a time into the gym.
Anybody have anything else for Keith?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you for your efforts.
Can I make one correction?
Sure.
No.
My numbers, please.
No.
We have 36 students that are attending four days a week and we have 12 remote. I was thinking 36 remote, that's too many.
12 remote.
Well, students with special needs doing remote only, 36 attending four days a week.
Okay.
Thank you. Superintendent's report, Lois?
Whenever, whenever you want.
I'm going to stick it up for the...
Okay. Yep. So, so, um, obviously you probably saw my report, tried to divide it up by the different areas. You know that, um, this summer, we've spent a lot of time with our stakeholders as we put our efforts into opening the schools, which meant lots of conversations with Hampton Police and Fire. Really appreciate the relationship we have with, um, obviously Chief Sawyer, Deputy Chief Hobbs, and talking to Deputy Chief Cutting, hugely helpful. Speaking with our town manager, Jamie Sullivan, just a tremendous help as we talk about all of these different things, working with the PTA, the Chamber of Commerce, C and CESP and the superintendents in the southeastern portion of the state. Keeping our parents on top of what we're doing through parent forums, really important to do that. Working with Ian Burgess from Secoast United and Ken Myers from YMCA, schools out to put together a, um, a daycare place off-site for our kids. I want to really just say a special thanks to Ian Burgess, who was tremendously helpful in securing that. I know he really, um, gave of his time and is giving of his facility and so I really appreciate that, so a big shout out to them. And obviously John Nyhan from the Chamber of Commerce is working with Candace O'Neill and our social worker, Emily Buckham, on helping parents with daycare. And so I really appreciate the PTA coming through on that and helping our families as another resource with the Chamber of Commerce to help to pay the cost of daycare for families that need that help. So big, big kudos to everyone. I mean, you can just see that everyone has really taken, taken a stake in supporting our schools and I just can't thank everyone enough. Going on to create, creating and maintaining a clean and healthy, physically and emotionally safe learning environment is always our, is always a priority, especially in light of COVID-19 times. And working with great people like our school counselors, with obviously Amber Levine, who is the chair of our professional development committee, Greg Lynn Harris, Sue Antico on the mentor program, just hugely helpful as we had our new staff orientation, which I appreciated that we're able to do that in our Hampton Academy auditorium and continue to be six feet apart and ensure everyone's safety and well-being, yet giving our new staff members an opportunity to come together and start to become entrenched in our community. So a welcome back to our new staff, a special thanks to everyone who made the orientation meaningful and, and helpful. I think it was very insightful. We, we know that with the new policy and the new law, which requires all educators to have two hours of suicide prevention training, that on September 25th, which will be a release day, we will participate in professional development offered by SOS, Connors Klein, and we're looking forward to doing that, which will help to fulfill that obligation. We have worked hard in putting together our back-to-school documents with our, um, we're calling it guest teachers as opposed to substitute teachers. It is a responsive classroom language in that we don't see, um, we found guest teachers seem to be a little more friendly in terms of having guests come in and to help out when we need substitutes and also to update our student and family handbook that was available to all of our families on the first day. Both of these documents are on our website for anyone, and I brought in a copy tonight if anyone wants to take a peek, peek at those as we updated all of those. We know that at the beginning of the year, our staff is required to participate in a number of professional developments. We're fortunate to be able to work with Primex on providing training around allergies, EpiPens, um, things like bloodborne pathogens, COVID-19, anti-bullying, understanding sexual harassment, Title VI training, and also diversity. So we did a lot of that. And then Mike Anderson, who is a local ASCD author, was provide, did provide on August 31st, two training sessions, one for pre-K to grade three and then the other one for grades four through eight. And specifically, he was speaking on how we build a community of learners in our COVID-19 times, developing expectation and routines, using language that promotes a culture of respect and collaboration. So we were fortunate to be able to offer that to folks. Just to let you know that we are continuing our efforts around equity and diversity as it impacts teaching and learning. We had all of our staff participate in Title VI training prior to the start of the school year, specifically looking at anti-racism, cultural conversations, how we are going to empower our students to hold themselves and their communities accountable, responding to discrimination in the classroom and really taking leaps from education to action. Staff was also provided with steps for responding to a racially charged incident and sources for continue educate, continuing education on engaging students. Um, I also want to let you know that we have continued our partnership with New Hampshire Listens, which is from UNH, the Carce Institute. We will continue our efforts as we continue that diversity training throughout the school year. And then, of course, Goal Five, which was going to be front and central, is our, our goal to remove, to move, to move from remote learning back to brick and mortar learning. And I'm really proud of every single person in SAU 90 in their efforts in just doing that. I think that, um, as I said at the start of the school year, it's not perfect, but it is a step in the right direction and I couldn't agree with you more, Keith, as I was able to go to all three schools in the last two days, being, be at the openings and being at the closing of the days. Kids, students were very happy. I think parents were happy. It's not perfect, we'll be the first to admit it, but I'm just so proud of the efforts of everyone in opening schools and a hybrid model and developing relationships with our students and starting the learning. And we absolutely have plans to look at where our students are academically. We really want to get them in, get them comfortable with learning. And then, of course, we will be doing those assessments with iReady and STAR, as well as we have New Hampshire interim assessments that the, that the commissioner has asked that we all participate in grades four through eight, so we'll have those as well. So we're looking forward to, to looking at the data, looking at the curriculum and coming up with plans of actions for how we're going to close, close those curriculum gaps and get our students back on track. But I have to say that the remote learning has been much tighter since the start of the school year for those students when they're not in school, on those off days and also in school, where we have those class sizes, as you heard, ideally from eight to 11, which really allow us to personalize instruction. So a big shout out to everyone and a great big thanks to everyone for their efforts. Um, I guess the only other two, two things I would want to highlight is that, you know that we have been working very closely with the Department of Health and Human Services and the school nurses have taken a huge lead in all of that. I did have Karen Brand come tonight as we look at our response to COVID-19, specifically looking at our protocols around all of that. So she's here. It was in your board packet for you to look at, but she's here to answer any questions that you might have. We also meet weekly, um, on Wednesday mornings. We're going to touch base and try to refine our procedures, come out with some friendly reminders to our staff around things like masks and things like those, those, um, entrance surveys that they have to do before they can come to school. So we're working with our families. I don't know if you wanted to have Karen come up and talk about that. And then the only other thing I wanted to mention is we've been very busy with C and CESP on their memorandum of agreement that we want to bring forward to the board tonight as it is just hot off the press and that is ready for our signatures as well. So we're really, um, we've worked extremely hard on that in the sense that Mr. DeLuca, Board Chair, Mr. Shepherd, myself, Keith Lassard, Mariah Curtis, along with our president, Andrew Wallace, Vice President, Amy Murphy, and obviously CESP President would be Linda Libby, Vice President, Jackie McCoy. We met easily, I'm going to say 15, 20 hours?
Oh, no, it was 30 hours.
It was, it was.
I was witness and it was closer to 30 hours.
Yeah, it was, it was, it was...
Lot.
A lot. And we also did receive feedback from Attorney Elwell and we got his feedback and we're able to work through that feedback as well. And I think at the end of the day, um, I really feel comfortable with the agreement that we came up with, so, um, so those, those are the two things that I leave you with for what you would like to do with, but we have Karen Brand here and we do have the memorandum of agreement.
Okay. Um, I don't think all of the board members need to sign the memorandum.
Yep, right.
No.
But we do have to vote on it, to agree to it.
Uh, yes.
Yes.
We, we did one last spring.
Yep.
Do you, do you recall?
Yep.
Okay. We get a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion to accept the MOA.
We haven't seen it.
Oh, wait a minute.
We haven't seen it. You haven't presented it to us, so we can't vote on it.
That's right.
Well, when we have a talk?
We can have a, we can have a non-public, you tell us the highlight.
Abs, absolutely.
Because if you don't tell the board what they're voting on, I don't think the board can vote.
Okay.
I, I was involved in the...
I know you were.
But while we have Karen here, if nobody has any big questions for her, I would like to say, huge, huge, thank you.
Thank you.
For everything that you've done, yeah, everything you've done is huge. Kathy Connery and who's my center nurse?
Amy.
Amy, all right, because it's just...
Amy's worked tremendously.
It's just been our nurses, you just can't say enough for keeping our, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
And Julie Holm questions.
And Julie, yep.
Yep, as well, so.
Thank you to all of you.
Tremendous effort by all, by all of them and...
Yeah.
They were, they were on those calls throughout the summer and I asked them to do that on Friday afternoons and they did that willingly and I guess I can't thank you enough, but I really feel confident in the protocols they put together and the safety of our students and our staff and our community, so thank you.
Well, and I also wanted just to add that the three of us nurses also partnered with the high school nurses in July and August, um, and they started the actual template for this protocol that we're using and then we three updated it according to governor's mandate. So it's truly a community effort in getting where we are today and we really appreciate that with the high school.
Yeah, there's a lot of...
That's cool.
Did the parents get copies of this at all?
So, so our COVID-19 expectations were put inside of the family handbook because we thought that was really important. And we also sent out a letter last Friday detailing some highlights with links to our resources on our website. So that went off last Friday to our families, just to make them aware that we have included everything on our website, so they can go in there and take a look at what the state is recommending and where we are, so that they can see that there's a real concerted effort for aligning recommendations.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions on the protocols, all that I can help you with? No?
No, they're perfect.
Make it easy.
If you're happy, we're happy.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Karen.
Thank you.
Thank you, principals.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
I know this is exciting stuff.
Yeah.
Do you want questions for the superintendent or are we going to do that later?
Oh, no, we can do it now.
Okay. Did your leadership team all sign their contracts and your faculty, the staff all sign their contracts? Did they read and also read, sign and understand their contracts?
Would it, re-sign?
Read, sign and understand their contracts.
I would hope so.
Okay, because there is a line under there that we adhere to the policies of the district.
Right.
Correct. And everyone understands and read that.
That would have been in April, correct?
That would have been what?
Before, yeah.
When they signed the contract.
This would be when they sign their contracts, yes.
I would hope so.
I would hope so, too.
Yeah.
Will the staff sign that they have taken the suicide prevention program?
Yes.
Okay, because just in case someone comes along and something happens, we have a copy of that.
Yeah.
Will the leadership team sign the statement that they have completed the New Hampshire Listens training?
Absolutely.
And that will be in their files, so if anything happens, we can go back to that.
Yes, in fact, um, if I could just follow up, if I could.
Yep.
Um, so we've been working very closely with OCR, just because this is something that's really important to all of us in our district and been working specifically with Tania Snow. And this summer, during the leadership retreat, Tania actually did leadership training for the entire leadership team during our retreat this summer. And as part of that, they had to train their staffs and I had to provide all of the staff who participated with dates and times and I actually sent to them what we use for training materials. So I was able to share with them specifically what we had done and so they, we asked for lists from the principals so that I had all of that information.
Good.
Yep, and so we do have a clear, um, we have a clear record of who attended those trainings that was included in that report. And also, in addition to that, when we do our Primex training, which is part of our diversity training, which is part of Primex, they have to, they, there's actually a quiz and a test and there's a sign-off on it as well that's part of Primex that's built right into it. So that's the great thing about anything by Primex, they actually help to organize it for us, so I can get a printout to know who participated, when they completed it and, you know, how they did on it. So it's pretty, um, it's pretty clear and we do have those records at our disposal.
Okay, and if somebody misses the suicide prevention, uh, program that you're doing, do they, they have to make it up, right?
Yes, they would. And I think due to the nature of what's going on with COVID-19, it will be virtual.
Okay.
And because it's virtual, um, it helps in terms of regardless of where you are, you can, you can participate in the training.
You have the list of webinars and the due date for when they all have to have them done.
Yep.
And it even says that they need to fill out the Google form attesting to the fact that, that they took this and saw it.
that, that they took this and saw it, so.
Yep.
Yeah.
And the contracts were done prior to the handbook being updated, so it may be something that we just send out to all schools again just to say that the handbook was updated, please take a look at it, just to refer to it again, but.
Well, they have.
But they had the, yeah.
Yeah, there's a sign-off for the families.
Yeah.
And I know that it was a conversation about signing off for staff, but that's a good, it's a good point to bring forward, Jenny.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I would take it if they're taking it, you know, online, if there's some form of registration that you did physically take it. You know?
Yeah.
Because that's what happens with me when I take courses.
Yeah, we just want backup in case something happens. I would agree because, you know, sometimes that can be costly.
What we've always done on the Google form is they have to log in with their account, which they shouldn't be sharing with anybody else, so that has to be them that's logging in. So when they log into the Google form and the student says they certified by checking off these things and I took these courses, they check off the ones that they've done. We have a running record of the ones that they've logged in and said they certified that they have completed, so.
Okay. Yeah, there's a new Seacoast advocacy group on racism. I don't know if you're familiar with it, but I was able to join it this summer and they came up with some tremendously helpful documents, including a PowerPoint and really about how schools should be responding to any kind of a racial incident. And that's the PowerPoint that our principals used as well as the OCR stuff as well as a couple of the documents we were able to put together. So it was pretty comprehensive and that's the stuff that we had to submit as well.
Good.
So, and I'm just waiting to hear back. I think we're pretty much closing the loop on that.
Good.
Yeah. So thank you.
Any other questions for the superintendent? Okay, finance, Mariah?
Yeah, so before I start, I just wanna mention that the administration, the administration team that we have has been wonderful. Like I've never seen a bunch of harder working employees and especially during COVID and the restrictions that we have and, and a lot of us still being either new or close to new, so they've, they've been wonderful and helpful and I truly appreciate all the work they've done, not only for me but for the kiddos. So I just wanna start with that. And also that there's been emails on Facebook and stuff out stating that New Hampshire has all kids eat for free till December.
Yes, COVID just released that.
Right, so we received the email about that. They said not to make an announcement yet due to it hasn't been voted on and it hadn't passed yet. So I haven't received anything else on it, but everybody else around the area seems to be announcing it. So if you do see that, as far as we know, all kids eat for free till December 31st, but it hasn't been 100% clarified to us.
And who's?
The states of New Hampshire, so, yeah.
At what rate?
Kids under 18 get to eat for free.
Oh, no, at what rate? Yeah, I understand what.
At what rate? Oh, so it would be at the free and reduced.
At the federal rate?
Yeah.
Which is what we voted on.
Yep, yep. So I'm sure we will announce it as soon as we get the information to do the go-ahead, but since it's been out there, I just wanted to make a note.
Are we taking money for lunches right now?
We haven't taken anything for lunches as of yet, I don't believe, but Mary said that the whole process for the food has been new, so it's been a little, I haven't had a chance to really get with her on.
Because we gotta keep, because if they say that, then we have to return, we have to return that money.
Right, or hold it until, so a lot of people had leftover money from last year, right? That, because my school books and stuff, they put money in. That stays in their account, so in December they could start using it or if they send us an email, we could handle that. But I just wanted to, since I'm sure it's out there and people have been seeing it.
Question on the program itself.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I can understand how we're feeding people that are attending school. What about the full remote?
We're still feeding them. They're part of the school, they're doing remote learning.
Well, how do you get in there?
So they have, we have pickup times.
Okay, there's pickup.
There's pickup times, yep.
But are we just doing free and reduce it right now, Mariah?
I believe that Mary offered it to everybody.
Okay.
And they needed to give her a list so that she knows how many kids and what they wanted.
Okay.
Because we have to pack it up and, you know, there's two, two to three meals.
Three days.
For three days, right, yep, right.
Does, does Mary have enough staff to?
Yes, yes.
And everybody gets it at home on Wednesday?
Yes, if they can pick it up, if they want to pick it up, yep. And I believe the kiddos that are there Tuesday can take it with them, I believe. But I figured I'd just mention it since I'm sure it's out there.
We'll have to have a fairly lengthy discussion about money in the lunch program when the budget comes up.
Yeah, because this is gonna like, well, it's gonna be interesting.
Well, and we really don't know what the summer money was yet. We still have to get reimbursed, like there's, that doesn't hit until October, so, I mean.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right?
We know that's coming.
Yeah, that's coming.
Like Christmas is coming.
I can give you my list of what I want.
Okay.
So now we'll go to the budget. So the budget is all utilities, expenses and normal monthly expenses are already encumbered for the year. We usually have that done by the end of August. Special Ed just starts usually at the end of August, beginning of September on encumbering all their expenses for the year, who we know is gonna be out of district, who's gonna have transportation. So that's all starting now. I won't have real good numbers maybe until the end of September. So we're working on that. My suggestion is that next month we, we look at the budget and we discuss looking at maybe a light freeze. We are, so far I, I counted about $7,000 just in PP supplies for one month. And that's masks, cleaning supplies, the.
Yeah, perhaps we can have a second meeting in October and, and one of, the second meeting focused on.
Focused on.
The budget, where we are, what your recommendations will be, et cetera, et cetera. So we get it in advance and.
Yeah.
People, would people be agreeable to something like that?
I would like to see that early October if possible, you know?
Well.
Right.
Because my concern is you have four areas that are gonna be critical.
So substitutes, right?
No, you've got substitute?
Well, we're, we're gonna be discussing it, so I don't think we need to discuss it tonight.
No, I'm just bringing it out, there's four areas.
Well, we know, we know we're gonna have to discuss that. How about if we just get a date for it?
Yes, let's get a date for it because we, like I said, I'm, I'm very mindful about the budget right now, very mindful, but things can shift, right? We don't know where we're gonna shift. If, if we stay the way we are, hybrid, expenses are gonna rise.
Well, we have.
So we've gotta look at that.
We have a board meeting on Tuesday the 13th, correct?
Yep. Correct.
Okay.
Which however, I wanted to, while we're talking about that, I did the board packet and I did not catch that I put the 12th. So anybody that sees that, please note that it's gonna be October 13th.
All right, and I know people have been filling in and we appreciate that.
So.
So would Pete, Mariah, would the 20th, the following week be enough time?
I have budget committee that night at seven.
All right.
We could do it prior to seven if.
I will be there if we do.
Okay, never mind then.
How about the Thursday, the 15th, or is that not, not good for people?
What about the?
What day is it?
I wanna give Mariah enough time to get all of it.
The 15th is perfect for me.
October 15th, Thursday, Ginny?
Yep, at what time, six o'clock?
We can do it at six o'clock. I don't think we necessarily have to do it here because it's, it's, it's a work session, so we'll figure out where we're gonna do that, but it's. Okay, and we, and we'll use that, the 15th, just for budget.
Perfect.
Okay.
Perfect. So with that said, we, I'm going to be working on the new budget for 2122, can you believe that? And this week received notice that New Hampshire Retirement Systems costs have gone up and I just want you to be aware of that. The rates are from July 1st, '21 to June 30th of '23. Teachers went up 3.22% and employees went up 2.89%. So that's gonna be part of looking at the new budget, I wanted to give you a heads up. And since we will be looking at the new budget, I gave you the, the form last year, so the one that is uncolored is last year's dates, the one that's colored is I started this year's dates. So we, maybe before we leave, come up with some.
Yes.
Budget work sessions.
Yes.
Okay? Keith and I had been working on some capital improvements for the budget. We didn't make a list, but they're the basics that we always do every year, the lights, the things that, that we have set aside in phases. So we're, we've started discussing that. And then the only other thing that I would like us to do if possible is the audit questionnaire.
We've done the, we've done these before. I, I, I think, do I read it and you folks answer?
Yeah.
Do you fill it in?
I can fill it in if you sign it.
All right, well, all right, to the members of the board. The following questions concerning your knowledge of the SAU's financial procedures. All right, here we go. Question number one, do you have any knowledge or suspicions of fraud affecting our entity?
No.
No.
Have you received any communications from employees, former employees, regulators or others alleging fraud?
No.
Have you identified any specific risks of fraud within your entity?
No.
No. Has the board adopted a universal code of ethics for members and employees to follow? I believe that's a yes.
Yes, yes.
And Mariah, it says if yes, furnish a copy.
Yes, it's attached.
Okay.
We have them attached.
If yes, does this document prohibit elected officials and employees from doing business with the entity?
No.
Ginny?
I don't think so.
Okay. So let me just throw this out Ginny, because I, I think you probably know this as well as anyone. If I was an electrician?
Yep.
Keith could hire me to, if I was a low bidder or something for a job?
I think he, I think you could. Let me, we got a board. It's right here, a board member.
If you, the revelation of an interest could either be biased or affect the outcome of a school board decision, disclosure must be public.
Okay.
And, and confirmed in writing, so you'd say I have an interest in.
Right, so I still could?
Yes.
Okay, so.
I, I believe.
So the document doesn't prohibit us from doing business if we had, if I was an electrician, I could still do business? Okay? So that's a no. Have you or any related party viewers had any interests, direct or indirect, in any of the following transactions? Sales, purchase, exchange or leasing of property?
No.
Receiving or furnishing of goods, services or facilities?
No.
Transfer or receipt of income or assets?
No.
Maintenance of bank balances or as compensating balances for the benefit of another?
No.
Other transactions?
No.
Getting there, folks? Does the board formally authorize all disbursements, both vendor and payroll, prior to the release of funds? That would be a yes. Describe how the board stays informed of the latest changes in the laws and regulations.
Through the School Board's Association?
Yeah.
Yep.
Through, what is that acronym, NSB?
Yep, New Ham, N-H-S-B-A-A, yep. And now for the New Hampshire School Administrators Association as well.
Yeah.
You do both, right?
Okay, and I'm, and I'm putting and school district.
Yep, so the N-H-S-A-A as well.
N-H?
S-A-A, New Hampshire School Administrators Association.
Describe how the board stays informed of the latest changes in the law as above?
Yep.
Same way?
Yep.
Does the board review comparative reports of estimated and actual revenues and appropriations and expenditures?
You do every month?
Yes, month.
Monthly, yep.
Monthly. What procedures does the board follow in reviewing or using these reports? For example, does the board normally meet with the department heads as part of the process? Or does the board review both the revenue and expenditure reports monthly?
Monthly with the business administrator.
As part of her report.
Yep.
Director of Finance.
Director of Finance.
Oh, I'm, I'm getting there.
Director of Finance, does she have the Director of Finance?
Right.
I'm getting there.
Has the board approved a disaster recovery plan in the event of loss or interruption of the IT function?
Have we, Greg?
There is the beginning of one. I think we could do a little bit better in describing what that is.
All right.
But yeah, we have, we have a plan.
Well, next week we're getting a whole new, the whole new system, which they have disaster, right, attached that.
We have it in place, it's just what, we wanna spell it out in a little more detail in writing for people and not.
Is there a written investment policy adopted?
Yes.
You have to provide copies of that too, just so you know.
Yeah.
Yeah, the investment, yes.
When was that last approved, reviewed?
August 2010.
Some of these need to be reviewed.
No, August 2019, last year.
Thank you.
When we filled out this report.
Have you adopted the use of either debit or credit cards by employees?
There's, there's one, but it's not in our name.
Yes, we're working on that too, but we do have policy for that also.
Yep.
So the answer to that?
Is yes.
Yep.
Does the board have knowledge of any funds or bank accounts that are not in the custody of the treasurer?
Yes.
Student activities?
Yes.
Yeah, the, through the PGA, right?
No, through the principals.
Principals.
Student activities.
The student activities.
Yeah.
It's automated now, the two.
Okay.
Activities accounts. Has the board approved a fund balance policy in compliance with G A S B number 54?
Didn't we do that?
Yes, when Nathan was here.
Mm-hmm.
You have to provide an updated copy. Does the school district have knowledge of any crowdfunding activities? Crowdfunding? I think it's a web-based thing, I'm gonna put no.
No, I don't think so.
So it says if so, what website are they maintaining? Since the WHO's declaration of the worldwide pandemic due to coronavirus, how has the board adopted, adapted, sorry, to making financial decisions, reviewing budget versus act reports and approving vendor, vendor and payroll manifests?
It's the same policy, right?
I'm gonna.
You guys have still been coming in and signing and seeing, it hasn't changed. I won't answer that for you.
Yeah.
We do, maybe meeting remotely rather than in person.
Right.
Right.
But the manifests and everything have been.
Signed.
Signed and you come and see them and, yep.
So, Mariah, I'll give you this copy, you can.
Perfect.
Make sure they get copies of whatever they need copies of.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. And thank you, Mariah. And thank you, Mariah. Are you finished?
I am finished, unless you have questions.
Well, I'm just gonna say, does anyone have any questions for Mariah?
Have we, uh, have we, uh, it's been two days. Have we utilized the, uh, sub account?
Not yet.
Not yet.
We tried.
Don't jinx me.
We, we tried, we couldn't find somebody, though, just so you know.
Guest teacher.
That's becoming an issue with everyone.
No, no, I just wanted to know if we had any teachers out in those book.
Right, the guest teacher.
We do, yep. We do have teachers out, unfortunately, um, but we, we, we took care of it internally.
Okay.
Okay.
Unfortunately, we couldn't find anyone. And that is going to be something that we're going to have to have some conversations about, because the subs are gonna be, it's gonna be hard to find subs.
Well, that will be part of the discussion that we have on the fifteenth.
Yep.
So, while, while we're all here, okay, we need to find some dates, because our calendars will fill up, for when we go through the budget books. Okay? Um, did you have them on, on this?
So, that's the new one. I don't have dates on there yet. Last year, we started November 4th.
We started November 4th, well.
I think we should do a little earlier.
Okay. Well, we won't have the budget books. Will we have them earlier?
So, I need to start them, and I need to get them done, but I have to have them done so that we can start working on them for whichever work session we decide to, so.
So, how long do you need?
I, I, I think we should
I think we
give ourselves four sessions.
I think we should start either the week of, the 5th of October, or at least at the latest, the 12th. And I will work my little heart out to have them completed before then.
Well, we already had two meetings that week of the 12th.
Right.
So, would you, would you folks wanna try to keep with Tuesdays?
Yeah.
Just not the 20th?
Not, not good for you?
No.
Okay, that's fine.
Any other day.
Thursdays seem to be the best for me, but that's just
What, what's good for you?
Thursdays seem to be the easiest for me.
How, how about if I throw out, and this might be the first one, or it might not be the first one, the 22nd of October?
That's fine with me.
Okay.
I'm probably gonna be, I'm not gonna be here.
Okay, well, are, are you all gone that whole week, or?
Yeah.
Okay.
Up right to the end of October.
Ooh. We may have to have one without you.
Okay.
Or you could attend it remote.
Yeah, or maybe. I don't know where you're gonna be. It's gonna be near a computer, or do you, you probably said, no, I'm gonna be on vacation.
I should be able to. No, the other times when I wasn't here, we did it with the phone. And I had to talk into the phone.
Well.
You can always call in, that's another option. There's another option to that, yeah.
Well, why don't we, why don't we try for the 22nd? And if, Pepper, if you can make it, great. And if, and that would be at 6 o'clock?
What's for me?
Budget meeting. Discussion. 6 o'clock, and we'll, uh, I don't know where we're gonna have that, because it's a work session. And, and how about the 29th?
That's fine.
Okay?
And I still won't be here. We'll give you, we'll give you options, right?
And how about November 5th? We're just keeping Thursdays rolling.
Yep.
And then November 12th, and that, that should be enough.
Should be plenty, yeah.
All at 6. Okay. All right, we, then, then we got that, that was some
Yeah, because those have to be televised, right?
No.
They don't?
Those are the ones we did up, uh, in the other office there, up on the table. We have books.
Okay.
No, they don't.
They don't have to be, when you vote on them, no?
No.
All right.
All right, so, read me the dates again.
22nd, 29th, the 5th, and the 12th.
Okay.
29th, 5th, and 12th, all at 6 o'clock.
Check on that, because John Judson might have been in the corner.
Yeah, we recorded it back.
We recorded them.
You're right.
Yes. You have to be in public.
Getting shots of somebody in the air to do the table.
Yeah.
What about the community, what about the community room?
Yeah, we'll figure, we'll figure out where we're gonna do it.
Maybe Greg can.
Yeah.
You want, or Keith?
That's right, I, it was unobtrusive. I forgot he was there.
Yeah, he was there, because you have to, yeah.
Yeah, we recorded it. So, we have.
But on budget, not for work session.
All right, that's my question.
Four, and then the fifteenth, when we're actually gonna go over just this year's budget.
Yes.
Okay.
And, and I would think going over this year's budget, and it may lead into some discussion about next year's.
Pepper, when are you leaving? Just so I have an idea, when I need to have the book done for you?
We'll be leaving the 14th of October.
Okay.
And we'll be gone until November 1st, November 2nd.
So, if I can try to get it done for the 9th, you can come pick it up, maybe? I'll, I'll give you a call.
Okay.
We don't need Colleen for those meetings, do we? No.
You, you need somebody that's gonna take minutes.
Kathleen did, took the votes.
Yeah, we think it was just votes.
We went over page by page or section. Kathleen did that.
I'm happy, I'll do that.
Let me, do we ask Lois to do it?
Yeah, kinda.
Okay, okay.
I'm good with it.
If elected, if elected, she would.
Between you and I, I'm sure we can get it.
We will, we'll do it. We're happy to do it. Especially if it's being reported anyways, we'll get it, we'll get it.
I don't mean to be mean to you guys, and I don't mean to be, you know, but I think you guys are a suit, are doing a lot. And you're asking your people to do a lot, and you're doing a lot. And I think sometimes, and you both are very accommodating, and we appreciate it, but I think at some point, you guys gotta say, I've gotta do my job. I cannot do anymore. And I think if your leadership team feels comfortable doing that, I think they need to do it. Because if they don't take care of their main job and themselves, they won't be good for anything else.
We tried to, we tried to stress that to them in a couple of ways, um, this summer, I hope, where I came out loud and clear. We talked a lot about self-care. And I know that it's really important that they do unplug, they do step away, they do take a break. I want them to relax on the weekends. I want them to, when they step away, they're, they are away. I go, this one here is burning the candle at
At both ends.
At both ends, and I, I've gotta keep an eye on her, so, but I, but I hear you. And I, I think it's really important that, um, you know, it's work hard, play hard. You know, when we're here, we work hard, but when we step away, we really need to step away. So, we can come back and be ready and refreshed, because there is a lot that's, to your point, that's been asked of us. But, we do it because we love, we love what we do. It's, I know it's a labor of love by every, on everyone's behalf, but I hear what you're saying. It's not lost on me.
Because I think if we need to get substitutes when somebody's going to be out, then we will do that. And if we, we'll find the money in the budget. We just don't want anyone to say, at the end of the day, I'm done, I've had it, this, you know, we can't go on anymore.
I'll, I'll be honest with you, um, subs were always a critical shortage anyways, right? Even before COVID-19 hit. What's happened is, unfortunately, many of the substitutes that would come in are, um, not feeling comfortable coming in.
Yeah.
So, it really has been, it's been, it was challenging, because we are following our protocols that are put in this packet to the letter. So, it means that if we have any concerns about people coming in, they've been upfront with us. Um, and we don't want them to come in, so we do need to then find substitutes for them. You, you can't always find substitutes, so we do look internally, because it's, it's a last resort. You know, please understand, this is a last resort. But it's, the subs are really challenging to the flu. So, you know that, know that.
Okay. Moving on. We had a couple of policies to look at. Second read, I believe?
Yep.
Yeah.
Those policies are... I don't see them. Oh, A C, nondiscrimination. Okay, and this is the second read.
Yep.
Uh, any questions, or does someone want to move to accept policy A C?
I'll make a motion to accept it.
Move Andrea, seconded. Pepper? Any discussion or questions? All those in favor? Frank?
I'll, I'll vote for it, but what page is it on?
There's no pages.
In the, near the back, near the
Oh, okay, I saw that, okay.
Okay, and, um, and that's, we also have A C R. It's on the back of it, next page, Frank, on the back.
Yeah.
Can we get a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept it.
Frank, seconded?
I'll second.
Andrea, discussion or questions?
It's all part of our Title VI training, just to make you aware.
Mm-hmm, yep.
All those in favor? Five zero. Okay. Okay, sorry. We also have, have some minutes of August 11th. Anyone wanna make a motion for the minutes of August 11th?
I'll make a motion to accept, however, I have a question on page four.
Okay.
Okay, in regards to the motion, and I, I need Virginia to correct me on this. On the school delay, you have five zero. I, didn't you vote against that?
No.
No, you voted for it. Okay, then, I'll make a motion to accept.
Okay.
I'll second.
Seconded, Pepper. All in favor? All right, and, I think?
Non-public.
And the non-public of August 11th?
I'll make a motion to accept.
Seconded?
I'll second.
Andrea? Any discussion? All in favor? Okay. Okay. Now, I know we have to, are we, did we cover everything?
We're great.
Okay.
Yep, I'll do.
I know we have to go in I know. I know we have to go into a non-public, but, um, at this time, we'll do public comment, so...
If I can just remind the public that it's five star to unmute if you have a question. Um, and I'll ask Keith, who's listening. Keith, do we have anybody that's raised their hand that would like to ask a question?
Uh, as of right now, it looks like we have no hands raised, but I will, uh, I'll interrupt if, uh, anyone, anyone hits those five stars.
Okay, well, I think we're going to non-public and second some, maybe if you wanna just wait.
Wait, wait a couple of minutes.
Okay. So, Keith, as soon as, if no one does, we will mute the phone on this end, and you can mute it also to make sure, um, as they go into non-public, and when we come back out, we'll take it off and mute again to adjourn the meeting. Any hands go up, Keith? Do we have any takers for, uh, comment?
Uh, it does not look like we have any.
Great, thank you.
Just wait a few more.
Wait a minute.
Don't you hurt yourself.
Stepping down on a rock.
Really?
On Mount Washington. Come on, let's, come on, Greg.
Oh, I didn't know if you'd heard the whole story.
No.
I was hiking Mount Washington. My daughter, who's found a new love of hiking this year, said, Dad, I know you've done it a few times. And I said, yeah, about four or five. And she said, will you take us up Mount Washington? It's a big step. Well, coming down, I took a big step in the wrong direction, I guess, and I was right near the top, and blew out my knee, and had to walk four miles in seven hours worth of painful hiking to get down off the mountain.
But you made it!
I made it. I can say it, almost 50, I made it to the top, and probably last time, I don't
You didn't have to be medevac, though?
No, not a $75,000 cost, I think.
I think we'll close public comment.
Great, thank you, Keith, we got muted from here. All right, you are muted from me, too.
Okay. So, can we get a motion?
I'll make a motion that we go to non-public.
No, in the here they asked.
Under under RSA 91A colon three, two.
Thank you very much. And I'll, you know, we're out, okay?
A B.
Colleen, you're free to go.
And Colleen, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Welcome, bye.